Good morning and welcome to this month's Phoenix City Council Downtown Aviation and Redevelopment Subcommittee. On this particular Subcommittee, I am honored to chair it and I'm joined by my colleagues, Councilwoman Williams and Diego, and we also have Councilman Bill Gates joining us by phone. Are you there, Councilman Gates?
I am.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, we always start this meeting off with the call to the public, we end it with the call to the public, is just a reminder that the community that we serve, the people that we serve should get the first and last word, or at least the opportunity to do so. So with that, I don't believe we have any cards for the initial call to the public. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the April 2nd minutes. Do we have a?
Move approval.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Terminal 4 Retail RFP update.
Mr. Chair, this is for information only in your packet and no presentation.
Any questions by my colleagues? Okay, this is for information only, no presentation, hearing no questions, and each of my colleagues and I have information in the packet. We'll move on to item five, request authorization to issue RFP for the fiscal year 1415 FAB funds.
There's no question, and I move approval. It's a consent item.
It is a consent item. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Moving right along to item six, Central Station Development Agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we have Maria Hyatt, the interim Public Transit Director, and Hank Marshall, the acting CED Director, and Scott Sumners, a deputy director from CED, to discuss very exciting plans for the development of the existing downtown bus terminal. And with that, I'll turn it over to the team to share their presentation with you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee. With me today are Maria Hyatt and Scott Sumners. Today, we are here to provide you with an update of results of the Phoenix Central Station request for proposals to redevelop the city's public transit property and facility at Central Avenue and Van Buren. The RFP process itself resulted in a very viable, iconic, transit-oriented proposal, which we will summarize for your input and discussion this morning. With that brief introduction, I'd like to put you in the very capable hands of Maria Hyatt.
Good morning, Chairman Valenzuela and members of the Subcommittee. We wanted to provide you a picture of Central Station. I'm sure all of you have been there. 2008, we had built, we actually built the facility in 1997. It was previously between Washington and Jefferson, right next to where Cityscape is. And it was just a sawtooth operation with very little shade. With the sale of that property, we were able to relocate and purchase the property between First Avenue and Central and Van Buren and Polk. And so we built that in 1997. The picture shows you what it looked like in 2008, which was probably state-of-the-art at that time. But we had the opportunity through the RFP funds to revitalize the site in 2011, add in solar shade canopies, additional passenger facilities that make waiting for the bus much easier. We also incorporated light rail stations on both sides of the platform in 2008, and so we wanted to make sure you knew what Central Station looked like. Before we start into Scott speaking more, I just want to say that they have been very, CED and through this RFP process, has been very cognizant of what transit's needs are through this process. We've been working in very close partnership on this process and are very excited by this opportunity. Scott?
Great, thank you, Maria. Chairman Valenzuela, Subcommittee members, we received authorization to issue this RFP in late 2013, actually issued the RFP in December. Proposals were due in February, and we received two proposals, one from a combination of Forum Capital LLC out of Scottsdale and AIG Global Real Estate, and then the second proposal from Smith Partners LLC. In March, April, and May, our evaluation panel reviewed the proposals, conducted interviews with both of the proposers, and prepared their scoring. Our panel for this effort was the largest and most inclusive panel that we've ever had on an RFP. We included four city staff members from the city departments that are involved, and eight community members representing the downtown neighborhoods, businesses, and organizations that are adjacent to the site, the development community. This was a very large and inclusive panel, and we thank them for their work over those three, four months, and their recommendation was, at the end of it, for, to proceed with negotiations with Smith Partners on their proposal. So, Smith Partners, the major entity there is the developer called Smithfield, originated in Chicago, and actually their principal has been a Phoenix or Arizona resident since 2009. From 2002 through the present, he's built and opened nine high-rise residential towers in Chicago, some of which are pictured here. And he's also had some experience in Phoenix. He opened a project called Domus, 36th Street and Campbell, just last year, and leasing up is going very well. And in 2014, earlier this year, started construction on another project at 16th Street and Georgia called AT 51. So what Smithfield is proposing for this site is pictured on this slide. So just for orientation, the residential tower that's being proposed is shown here with the yellow arrow. What you see in the middle of the slide is Civic Space Park, and on the very lower left-hand corner is the historic post office. So this residential tower would essentially bookend the other end of Civic Space Park. The tower is approximately 34 stories, about 400 feet tall, 476 apartments are what was shown in their proposal. A parking garage abuts the tower on the south side, so the parking garage would front onto Van Buren, and at the street level, that garage would have commercial space on one side, public transit space. There's a 4,500 square foot building that's on the site right now that, as part of the project, the developer would need to replace in kind. So that's on one side of the garage at street level. On the other side is what the developers proposed is co-work space, about the same footprint, about 4,500 square feet. And then there's also some parking at the street level as well. Up on the north end of the site, the Polk Street alignment runs east and west, kind of in front of the tower on this slide, and just north of that, there's a small parcel that developers proposed to install a dog park. The total value of the project is on the order of $82 million. That's our developers' estimate. And in addition to being very qualified and having a lot of experience actually building similar projects, one of the things that the panel noted in its recommendation is the level of detail that the developer went into in their proposal, and so that's kind of demonstrated by the diagram here on the left. They went through the pains to actually show how pedestrian and car circulation would work in and around the site, and how this thing would actually function on a day-to-day basis, which is great. Up in the upper right-hand slide image, what you see on this slide, is the tower on the left and the garage with office space and retail space wrapping, and then the amenity deck with the pool up on the top level of the garage. On the lower right-hand side of the slide, you see an image that shows what could be a shade canopy for the buses along the Van Buren Street edge. All right, in terms of business terms, we're still in negotiation with our developer, but they will include developer commitments specifically to build the project at a minimum height, minimum number of units, minimum amount of commercial and office space, and a requirement to replace the public transit space that was on the site already, and that's approximately 4,500 square feet. The details of the lease are still being worked out in terms of what kind of lease, what the duration is, what the rent payments would be, and regardless what the rent payments are, what we're contemplating is a minimum guarantee because public transit needs a revenue stream long-term to support the city's public transportation system. But then also, our developer has proposed something that's pretty unique that we think is great, and that's revenue sharing. So if they do well in their pro forma and they're able to get the rents that they anticipate, we actually, as the city, would get a piece of that. So, pretty innovative. The city's commitments under the development agreement would be to relocate the public transit operations prior to any construction starting, and that relates to bus and operations that exist on the site right now, and also handle all the coordination with all the agencies that are involved at all different levels, including Valley Metro, the RPTA, and the FTA, the Federal Transit Administration, that Maria mentioned as well. So with that, I'll hand it back to Maria to talk through impacts to transit.
So when we put together the RFP, we noted to any of the proposers that there should be, there must be no impact to light rail. That operation needs to continue. On the bus side, we have buses that come through the property and on the exterior of the property. With the changes that we made, the upgrade to the facility we made in 2011, we had a plan on how to move everything out while we were doing some major renovations on the site. We'll dust off that plan and make temporary modifications to our bus routes on the new stops, obviously working with the community on where those are. But we will be working very closely on making sure that our passengers still know where to buy their bus fares, lost and found, all of the different transactions that happen in our 4,500 square foot facility.
Great, thanks, Maria. We also put together some estimates based on the values that the developer included in his proposal for construction, and the numbers they included in their pro forma and the operating numbers, and essentially came up with this project generating on the order of $1.4 million in construction sales tax, and then annual tax revenues from rental residential tax to the tune of about $120,000 in the first year escalating as rents increase, commercial rental tax for the retail space, a little bit smaller, $15,000 a year, and then utility taxes approximately $115,000 a year. In addition to that, we think that this will provide some opportunities for the public transit system to defer some of their operating costs. One of the proposals from our developer is that they would assume responsibility for a lot of the site maintenance that public transit pays for right now, so for the landscape, for instance, on the east and west sides of the site by the light rail platforms, and for maintenance and upkeep and trash pickup and things like that for the entire site. So that's a deferred cost that would benefit public transit as well. In terms of schedule, we are targeting, and our developers proposed, preconstruction and design and permitting for the remainder of this year and going into 2015, a construction start in hopefully 2015, probably 2016 at the latest, and then completion and opening in the 2017, 18 timeframe. And in terms of our short-term process, we're here at the Subcommittee here this morning. We're planning to be in front of the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee on, next week, planning to be out in the community at a few neighborhood meetings coming up here at Evans Churchill and Downtown Voices in that same week, and then our request for City Council authorization and FTA authorization would follow, depending on what happens with the negotiations. And with that, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions by Councilwoman?
As for Maria, do you provide security on the site now?
We do provide security on the site, using the Transit Enforcement Unit.
Right. Would that continue, or will the builder provide some security on the site?
We, you know, that is one of the things that we would need to negotiate with the developer. Our facilities, you know, will depend on where our facilities are located within the site. We do co-locate our Transit Enforcement Unit folks in the facility, so they'll still actually be there, but whether they'll be monitoring the whole site, that will be what we'll need to negotiate and discuss.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Councilman Gates?
No.
Okay. And I know that this is for information discussion only, and this Subcommittee action will be taken in the Transportation Subcommittee. So, hearing none, thank you so much for the, I'm sorry, we do have one card. Thank you, Penny. DeeDee Barker. Hi, Ms. Barker. Give you two minutes.
Thank you, Chairman Valenzuela and Committee. Diane Barker, District 7. Yeah, I'm excited about this project and the fact that the city is doing, what they need to do on a lot of projects is bring in like the bank, bring in like innovative ideas to bring money and revenues into the city. And I'm just wondering in the renovation of the project and changing transit, if there's any move that we would get the bigger buses out of the central core and, you know, have, you know, smaller shuttles, and maybe just have like a private contractor that would be bringing people down into the city on a private large coach, you know, place for them to board and deboard, you know, for something like that, and certainly for the bicycle facilities, because there is, if you can see, there's greater movement and need for bicycle facilities. We have ASU, you know, down here, and people are using that more, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. Okay, thank you so much for the presentation. We now will go to item seven, Parking Meter Program Changes and the Outreach Plan.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Subcommittee members. We are here to make some recommendations with regard to changes to our parking meter program. We went for information to the Transportation and Infrastructure Subcommittee at its last meeting, and have been out talking with community members and getting feedback and input about the proposed changes. This issue came up this spring, really, as the council was discussing revenue items for the city's budget, and as you know, the budget adopted includes some revenue estimates that are inclusive of potential parking meter collection increases. But really, this is an opportunity to revisit a program that needed revisiting, because our system was set up with static rates, old meters that took coins, and really was set up in a time when downtown was not as robust a place, and where the diversity of uses and transportation patterns and things like that were very different than they are today. So it gives us a great opportunity to sort of do an overview and compare to other places. We do request that you make a recommendation to the full council so that we can then go forward and make ordinance changes that we need to make to be able to implement some of these proposals. So I'm going to turn it over to Ray Dovellina and Tom Godby from the Street Transportation Department to walk you through the PowerPoint.
Thank you, Rick. Good morning, Chairman Valenzuela and Subcommittee members. Thanks, thanks for the opportunity. Let me start off with just the program history on the parking meters. We've had a long history of the parking meter program. It started in the early 70s and moved forward back then with different rates. And most recently, in the 2000 era, we did change the rates that were at 60 cents per hour to $1.50 in 2009. And also in 2012, there was a change because of a lot of the different things that were happening in downtown. We changed the enforcement timeframes and days to include Saturday and also extended hours after 5:00 p.m. up to 8:00 p.m. And then in 2012, there was a change because of things that were happening with a variety of merchants. We scaled that back to only Monday to Friday and 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., excluding the Saturdays. As well as about a year ago, we've deployed a number of new parking meters, and I'll go into the different types of parking meters that we have now in the downtown area. Currently, we have a little bit less than half of the parking meters that are credit card-enabled. Most of our parking meters are, more than half of the parking meters are still coin-operated, so we're looking at more of a progressive, more user-friendly, customer-friendly parking meters. This shows a, just an inventory of where all of our parking meters are at. We roughly have a little bit less than 1,900 parking meters. The majority of those parking meters are in the downtown area, as you can see from this figure. About 80% of those parking meters are in the downtown. In doing some of the surveys and just reviewing other cities of what they've done, just looking at Saturday service, 90% of those cities surveyed have Saturday service, and as you can see, also Sunday, a little bit less than 50% or less than 45% include Sundays as another enforcement day. And then looking at just comparing, comparing Phoenix as the other cities across the United States, we're one of the lowest with the enforcement timeframes from 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. And as you can see, going down the scale, or going up the scale, a lot of the metropolitan cities have longer enforcement hours. Just to note, the 10:00 p.m. also includes Tempe, City of Tempe, just across the border from our adjacent community. Of those, there are six communities that go beyond midnight, just to note that. There's another aspect that we've been just analyzing. And then looking at the different types of parking technologies to include better customer service, we have pay stations that we've incorporated into the downtown. There's about 133 spaces that use this type of pay station equipment. And then this next one is more popular. It's been, we've gotten a lot more positive feedback in using the single-space parking meters. We have about 730 of those. As mentioned, they're preferred by customers. This just shows a, just a comparison of where we're at a couple of years ago in revenue, and what happened, and the change when we included beyond the 5:00 p.m. up to 8:00 p.m., and then also Saturdays. So going from 60 cents per hour, Monday through Friday, we were roughly getting about $94,000 a month in revenue, and then going in 2009 through 2012, that was the expanded timeframe, we were approximately $178,000 in revenue per month. Now, up and since 2012, because of the reduction of Saturdays and also the reduction of the three hours from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., we're looking at about $140,000 that we collect currently, and that equates to about 1.6, a little bit less than 1.7 million dollars. Again, just looking at the review, per review of other cities, we rank sort of in the lower end on pricing of per hour as compared to other cities. As you can see, they go up to more than $5 per hour, depending on the cities. So the proposal that we're looking at is this type of proposal where we would be looking at some zones in the different specific areas. Zone 1 would be sports venue, Zone 2 would be central core, and then Zone 3 would be a government zone. As you can see, there's different pricings. Not only goes from less than $1.50 per hour, but down to 50 cents, up to $5 an hour. Based on feedback that we got from the public, we had estimated only to go up from Fillmore to Roosevelt, but because of the public outreach that we did, we extended that up to Moreland as a potential future phase, as a future Zone 4 for neighborhoods and arts area. So some of the advantages that we're looking at for just the variable rate pricing, it allows the city to reduce based on low demand. There's, it's basically a supply-demand type of scenario for better use of the right-of-way and flexibility of the right-of-way, reduces the long-term usage. Right now, if we have an event on Sunday, because of the enforcement timeframes that we have, we have to bag certain meters because of those events that we have, those great events that we have on Friday. So if we had longer times, and also including the weekends, we could have those meters bagged a day before, and then also after the event, supposedly on like on a Sunday afternoon, then take those bags out. So it's a better management tool to negotiate our parking management in downtown. It promotes short-term parking. That's another positive thing in looking at businesses and restaurants in the downtown where there's people that are parking right now after 5:00 p.m., there is no changeover. So we're looking at this as being more of a positive for the short-term user as opposed to somebody that's going to a different venue for a longer time use. And then also looking at more of the credit cards, and again, that's been a very positive thing, and using credit card use for these parking meters. And then the last thing is encourages more transport, multimodal transportation use for anybody that's coming to downtown. Some of the results that we did, we did a very short study in April 2nd from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and what we found that about, in the evening, there's about 500 spaces that we looked at, 80% of those are in the downtown area. The peak time that they were used were around after 5:00 p.m. at 7:30. So we can, we do see that there's a lot of use after 5:00 p.m., and that's one of the things that we're looking at, because again, people are parking after 5:00 p.m. and they're staying in those spaces, whereas if you had shorter timeframes, you could have more turnover and better flexibility for the parking users. Also, the average evening parker stayed more than three hours without moving that vehicle. So again, that's showing that there's not a lot of turnover with these parking spaces. Just an average between the garages, we're looking at $15 to $20 per vehicle as compared to on-street parking. So we see sort of a benefit in how we can manage that downtown parking space. Here's a, just a community outreach. We were very aggressive in working with the community, not only with the downtown Phoenix Partnership, they were very helpful in working with us and reaching out for the public. We met with the Evans Churchill Community Association, also the Roosevelt Row, CDC, and Merchants Association, very positive. Their concerns were more with regards to going north of Fillmore and going up to, north of Roosevelt and those areas, and how those were going to be impacted. We also had two open houses recently on May 28, and roughly we had a little bit over 20 people that attended that, those open houses. Moving along with our community outreach, some of the concerns that were brought up, as anything, enforcement is a big issue, and just to kind of show you the, just a picture of confusion, we want to minimize confusion to the traveling public. It's a pretty good picture there. We also want to make sure that the rates are reasonable and also are, they're not changing. They had a concern about variable rates changing dramatically. Also, the adjustment of durations for allowing more time for people to visit shops. So one of the things that we're going to be looking at is we're going to remove the one hour. Instead of one hour, we're going to do at least minimum two hours, so there's some more time for a person that can visit either a restaurant or shop. Also, the unhooding of meters on the weekend, that's a challenge right now because we have to hood them on Fridays before 5:00 p.m., and we don't come back until Monday to unhood those meters for special events in the downtown. And then just discouraging people from, we don't want to discourage people from coming to downtown. We want to make it a positive experience coming to the downtown with this proposed change. So looking at the next steps, as we mentioned, we've met with the downtown stakeholders. We've been meeting constantly here up until recently. We're going to be looking at the ordinances that need to be changed to incorporate these changes, and then looking at moving forward with your recommendation for full council approval in June 18. We are looking at two phases, and I'll go into the two phases of the recommendation. The two phases that we're looking at is changing the hours and the days to include Saturdays and Sundays and also holidays all the way up to 10:00 p.m. That would be a first phase. We would not change the rate, but would be something that we can transition to a changeable rate after the first phase. The second phase would be sometime in the fall, we're estimating October, November, to change and add the variable rate pricing as indicated in those different zones. And again, the rates would be from 50 cents to roughly $5 to $6. So that is our recommendation at this time.
And Mr. Chairman and Subcommittee members, just to make sure you and the public know this, this potential rate change was posted on phoenix.gov 60 days in advance of the anticipated council action on this item. So that's why June 18th is the date at which we were So that's why June 18th is the date which we would come forward or sometime after that.
Thanks, Rick. We have a couple of cards. Do you mind if we go to the cards first? First card in favor, David Rodrick from Downtown Phoenix Partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the subcommittee. Dave Rodrick, President Downtown Phoenix Partnership. We've worked very closely with staff. I would certainly commend Ray and his folks in, in the effort they did to outreach to us. Obviously, with parking meters, there is a tremendous amount of ideas and concerns that, that, you know, you talk to 10 people and you get 10 different ideas. But I would say in general, our stakeholders are supportive of going to the evening and weekend hours. There's been a lot of concern about, you know, attendees from the ballparks that are just taking up spaces in front of restaurants and retailers and encouraging some of that turnover, pushing them into garages, I think is a, is a better concept. Probably the, the biggest concern we've heard has been in terms of the amount under the variable rate system. Obviously, you, you put $6 an hour in there, that's not going to be necessarily the amount that was done, you know, to, to notice. But there was pushback on that. And hopefully, you know, under the variable rate system, there are reasonable amounts in terms of the hourly rates that still will exist to, to encourage people to come downtown. The other thing we heard very strongly is we want to see the rest of the meters transition from the, the coin meters to the credit card enabled, if they are the single space meters. There's been a lot of pushback on the, the parking on the, the big boxes. Those just are not as effective in terms of, people are very confused about how those work and so on. The single space meters work very effectively. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rodrick. Mark and oppose, Tim Sirakowski.
Good morning, Tim Sirakowski. Thank you, council members, for hearing me today. It seems that we need to generate money in the City of Phoenix, and I understand this.
Sorry.
It's okay. But it looks like you're going to be gouging people who are going to baseball games, basketball games. They're going to take the brunt end of this. They're going to be paying pretty much $6 an hour, and then they're going to be spending $8 for a beer. I'm just trying to figure out at what point do these individuals stop coming down to the downtown area? I mean, Scottsdale now are having people being brought in on shuttle services from outlining areas so that they can eliminate the traffic flow in the downtown Scottsdale area. If anyone has been to the downtown Scottsdale area on a Friday or Saturday night, it doesn't seem like they're lacking for business in any of those areas. So I'm trying to figure out, are we just driving our tourist industry somewhere else? Because it sort of seems that way. We're Phase 2 October, you're going to put it up to $6 an hour. Let's see, someone's going to come down here and pay a $240 traffic ticket, and they're going to come outside and they're going to pay another $18 or whatever they're going to pay for parking? I'm trying to figure out at what point do these people start really taking a negative attitude towards the City of Phoenix? And I think that should be questioned at this point. I did my own survey down here, and we, we went out and we talked to 177 different people using the parking meters. And the response I received from those individuals is, are they crazy? You'll have a dead downtown area. This downtown area, if you keep gouging them, there's not going to be much left. I, I, I've been, I've been a resident in this area for many, many years, and it's become apparent that when people get out of work on Fridays, they don't stay in the downtown area. They don't really even stay in the downtown area after basketball games or baseball games. They leave. Most of the restaurants in this downtown area are dying at the present time. They're, they're, they're not making it. So I'm just trying to figure out what we can do besides gouge them more money for parking, if there's something else we can do to try to rectify this situation instead of trying to get more money out of them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I'll turn it over to my colleagues. Any questions or comments? Councilwoman.
Can you talk a little bit about the transition period and if we'll do a warning? There may be many people who are used to parking on Sundays and will be surprised and how we'll spread the word.
Chairman Valenzuela and Councilwoman Gallego, certainly, we are working towards a messaging for how we're going to deliver the, the, the changes. With that, we're certainly going to be working with the Downtown Partnership, looking at ways of how we can work with them, their, their outreach aspects that they have, but also looking at how we can work with our Public Information Office and dealing with a message that's concise and complete for the, for the public.
Are we considering a warning period?
Could you, can you answer?
Sorry, we can certainly work with the police department and see if we can do maybe a 30-day warning because it, it honestly, it will take some time for people that don't come downtown regularly to, to get used to this. And I think that's certainly worthy of additional discussion.
Wonderful. I just, I also am concerned with the people who do come downtown regularly and have patterns. And we want them to, to keep coming down regularly. As someone who represents one of the downtown districts, one of my top priorities, my top priority is getting more people to live down here. And I do hear from folks that they want more retail and shopping establishments. And I think improving the circulation will be very helpful in that because we do have people who will park for the bulk of the entire weekend. And I do hear from the downtown businesses, they want people to be able to come in and out more easily. So I think that will be important actually for building a more vibrant downtown, but...
Mr. Chairman, Councilwoman Gallego, that probably the hardest part for people on the communication side is going to be the second phase, which is the variable rates. We do, you know, a lot of other cities have them and have them in different zones and adjust some regularly. But as Councilwoman Pastore pointed out during the Transportation Infrastructure Subcommittee meeting, the last thing we want to happen is for people to be super confused about it, which is, we put up that cartoon for a reason because we don't want it to be as complicated as that. And so that's really, I mean, well, definitely the first phase too, we would need to communicate and have a, have a warning period. But I think in particular, that second phase, how we roll that out is really, really going to be important. So we'll, we'll lay out for you what our communication plan is if the council adopts these.
And I do share some of the concerns we heard today about the $6 an hour parking. So I don't know if Councilwoman Williams has questions first, but I will be making a motion that we approve this with a cap of $4 an hour, which I think will balance our needs for encouraging circulation and also trying to make sure that the top pricing is reflective of what the community is telling us. That we did, we did hear a lot of input in our office that $6 seemed like too much for, for downtown. So I don't know if you, if you're ready for me to make a motion or if you want to? Have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we, we do have cards.
Did we take the cards already?
Hold on one second.
Okay, then I will hold off.
Yeah, actually, we, we did go through the cards, but we'll, we'll hear your comments and we'll go to Councilman Gates.
Okay. I come downtown, park near one of the arenas. And I do that mid-afternoon because I'm going to a restaurant or do something. When do you change this rate? I mean, does it start first thing in the morning? Because if I happen to be parked there and you change the rate, what happens? Do I just automatically get a ticket? Not knowing you were going to change the rate or...
Just to add, Mr. Chairman and Councilwoman Williams, what we're looking at is more of the utilization of those, of those parking spaces. And we foresee that it's probably going to be after 5:00, when, where there's, there's events in the downtown where we, we're trying to better manage the downtown and with all of the different venues and, and events that there are. So the, the likelihood would be probably a combination of probably after lunchtime and also after 5:00 p.m. So it's a combination of when those events are starting up as well as potentially on the weekends when there's a lot of different events that we have in the, in the weekend as well.
So the new technology, Mr. Chairman and subcommittee members, it allows us to remotely make changes. But obviously, we don't want to remotely make them if, if there's not a good communication about it.
Yeah, if somebody's parked there.
Right.
And you up the rate.
Yeah, and we're not going to, we're not, that's not going to be an issue for you.
Meter expire.
Yeah, that's not going to be an issue for you. And the meter will clearly say either with signage or physically on the meter, this is the, the current rate. And there are signs, I've seen people, as we've started to talk about this, people who've been traveling have sent me photos of signs in other places. So as an example, Denver charges, I think it's 50 cents an hour overnight or 20 cents an hour overnight. And then they have different rates during the day so that people don't use the right-of-way as their parking garage, or at least they don't pay for that a little bit. But each zone would be very carefully managed based upon sort of the supply and demand circumstances of that zone. And if they're not working well, what this, what this really does for the staff is allows us to better manage to respond to supply and demand. And, and we just got to be really careful how we do it so we don't catch people in, in a situation like you're, like you were describing.
Councilman Gates?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess my first question for staff is, what are we trying to accomplish here? I mean, are we trying to generate revenue? Are we trying to change behavior? What's really driving this?
Mr. Chairman, Councilman Gates, it's a little of everything, but, but our principal focus is the purpose of parking meters is to not let people park their car all day in the street. They, the purpose is to encourage access and then turnover. So as Mr. Rodrick said, if an employee like me who works downtown, if I drive my car downtown and don't want to pay for parking in our garage, which I currently do, I could avoid that by parking on the street. If the rates were low enough, I would be incentivized to do so. So as an example, a downtown worker who works an evening shift at a hotel or at the ballpark or whatever, right now can walk, can drive downtown, park for free all night long or all day, you know, anytime after 5:00. And so one of the critical issues for us is to use this technology for its intended purpose, which is to encourage access and turnover. Now, all of those things, and then also with the new technology, make it easier for people as well. All of those things also do work to generate more revenue because right now our rates are so low and our hours of enforcement are completely off the charts in terms of what major cities like us do. Obviously, when we change the hours and when we change the rates, we're also going to collect more revenue. But, so this is something that's been on staff's mind for a long time. It was raised during the revenue, during the budget discussion as a potential source of increased revenue. But that really has not been our primary motive in the work that, that we've been doing.
What is the, when you, when you talk about the increased revenue that you would anticipate from this, and, you know, what I'm trying to figure out is where the money is going to come from. So do you have any idea how much of that increase you are attributing to the increase in the, the price that you're charging? How much is to the extension of hours and how much of it is to the concept of variable pricing? Do you have any idea?
Mr. Chairman and Councilman Gates, just to give you a comparison, when we went from including Saturdays and from, and reducing the time from 8:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., there was roughly about $750,000 that was removed or minus revenue. So we, we use those numbers to interpolate and get a, a sense of forecasting for if we increase the, back to the Saturday enforcement time as well as Sundays and also holidays and also the inclusion of another couple of hours till 10:00 p.m. We use that number to kind of interpolate and figure out, well, it's going to be this amount. And we're estimating between a million to 2 million additional funds would be netted as we move forward with this program. Again, it could be, you know, it could be a little bit more or it could be a little bit less, but we're, that's what we're looking at.
As you, Mr. Chairman and Councilman Gates, as you saw in your packet, there's also an expense side to this. We need to add parking enforcement staff to cover the hours of expansion. And in order to manage the variable rate system, if we go to that, Street Transportation's going to need somebody to, whose job it is to manage that system. And the, the advertised amount was a lot more revenue with the, with both the hours and the, and the up to $6. I think the anticipated revenue is, you know, quite a bit higher than we have budgeted for, for this coming year. The hours alone will get us a decent amount of revenue, but not enough to be able to afford the increased parking attendant, parking enforcement cost, which is a critical component of the system. So if we just did hours and didn't address rates, we probably would not collect enough to cover the added expenditures that we need to do and still, you know, balance the budget as, as, as planned. So it's probably a 50/50. But I, I don't know that we have the exact numbers for just hours enforcement and what that brings in.
Mr. Chair, as far as Saturdays and Sundays are concerned, we have no, we have no track record on that at all, right? So I mean, we're, that's just kind of a shot in the dark.
No, Mr. Chairman and Councilman Gates, that's incorrect. On Saturdays, we do. We previously had enforcement from 8:00 to 5:00 on, or 8:00 to 8:00 on Saturdays.
Okay, I stand, I stand corrected. Why couldn't we, I'm not, I'm no parking meter expert. Why couldn't we just have the meters on during events on the weekends? If we have, you know, if we have this, this new technology? My, my concern is when, you know, a lot of time on the weekends, there's, unfortunately, maybe we don't have as many people downtown as we'd like to see. And the fact that people are being charged to park on the street when there's not people around is going to seem illogical. Is there any way we could do that to just say, okay, we're going to charge during these high-traffic times, certain events, games, things like that on the weekend?
Mr. Chairman and Councilman Gates, that's certainly a possibility. My observation is that on Saturdays and particularly Saturday nights, there's always something happening. Sundays, it may be a little bit quieter. And daytimes on the weekends is a little quieter than evenings, except obviously when there's a baseball game during the afternoon.
Right.
But, but eve, Saturday evenings, there's not a, a Saturday evening when downtown is looking empty.
Yeah, I don't question that, but I mean, clearly Sundays is going to be very quiet sometimes.
Sometimes, yes. But to get back to your, your point, I think if you approve the ranges and the variable plan, our plan managers will be, respond to the need in the, in the supply and demand so that if they're finding that space, that spaces are sitting empty on Sunday day, they can go down to the minimum rate or even have the rate be zero for certain non-special-event Sundays. But I think giving us the ability to, to manage this resource in a way a business would really helps, helps us be able to, to take advantage of the purpose of the technology, but, but neither disincent people to come downtown nor give away the resource for free, making it so that people can access businesses.
But that's a decision that staff's going to make once we give the blanket authorization for basically 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Monday through Sunday.
Mr. Chairman, Councilman Gates, that's correct. And, and actually, you've, you've done something like that with our garages that we own and both at the airport and downtown. We currently, the, the, there's a price range that we're allowed to charge for those garages. And when people come down, when it's a busy day, sometimes those garages are $20 and sometimes they're 10. Sometimes they're $2, depends on what's going on. We anticipate that we would manage the zones in that same way, responding to supply and demand.
Mr. Chair, there, there was some discussion in the materials about allowing cell phone pay to occur. That's not part of this recommendation, is that right?
Mr. Chairman and Councilman Gates, again, with the discussion of the messaging of how we're going to treat this, certainly, we're, we're going to have, the, the technology's there that we can use that. And so when we develop our communication plan to make sure how we phase this in, certainly that is a, a component that we can add to, to the, to the customer. And it's, it's doable through our technology.
And we don't need an ordinance change on that for you to be able to do that?
We're not aware of that. We've already, I'm sorry, we've already updated the ordinance to cover that.
Okay, good. Well, I just want to weigh in, it's, it's very supportive of that option.